That is going to conclude our public hearing. So feel free to stick around for the regular town council meeting if you so desire. If you would stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Absolutely. Let's bow, hands and pray. Our gracious and kind heavenly Father, Lord, as we gather here today, Lord, we ask that you'll be with this board, this town council, Lord. Give them the guidance, give them the wisdom, the courage, give them the ability to make decisions that are not only in the best interest of this town, Lord, but are in the best interest of you and your son's name. We ask that you'll be with the people that couldn't be here tonight for whatever the reason, that you'll touch their lives. Lord, we ask that you'll be with the people that are here tonight. You'll give them understanding and safe travel back home. Will we ask all this in your son's name and pray? I'll be here.
Please be seated. So first on the agenda is our new business recognition. First, we have Mr. Delmato and managers Joe and Antonio from the Happy Goat.
How are you?
If you could come up and tell us a little bit of what you've got going on.
Go to the house.
That's right. How are you doing?
Well, it's just myself and Joe, right, today. But yeah, we appreciate calling us out tonight and working with us here. We've had a busy first, I guess, three and a half weeks, and all seems to be going well so far. We're learning a lot. We're feeding a lot of folks, especially a lot of our Main Street lawyers, which is a good thing. And folks coming in and out of the courthouse, and so we appreciate very much all the folks that have patronized us so far. And we have a lot of other things planned for the spring, but, you know, little things at a time. But yeah, Antonio moved from Richmond to Tazewell. Joe and Antonio met at Virginia Tech. Joe kind of grew up here in Tazewell. Spent, he was baptized here, right, at the Presbyterian Church, and grew up here. Antonio loves being here. He loves the outdoor environment, the hunting, the fishing, all the things that people enjoy living around here. And we've hired, we have three other folks that have joined us so far, so that's a good thing. We've got two part-time ladies working for us, and we have another lady who's helping us doing all the cooking and prepping for us. She's making a lot of homemade chicken salad, which I heard is very good. It is very good.
So for the people who may not know, could you explain a little bit of your menu like you have?
Yeah, you know, we have limitations in the space, so we're not a restaurant. We didn't install a grill there. You know, we're kind of like a sandwich shop, salad sandwiches. You know, we'll have some dessert food. We'll have some ice cream or gelato come springtime in the store. We're doing soups and chili. The chili is being made with local beef and local pork, which is nice, and we really hope to get a great connection with local farmers. I think we have plenty of great produce here, so we hope to take advantage of that. And yeah, I think there's lots of other ideas that we're pondering for the future of that Happy Goat. And who doesn't want to be a happy goat? Brad told me to say that.
But we do appreciate you guys taking a chance on town in Tazewell, and we do have party gifts here. We're going to take it with you, and you get to have your picture taken with me, which is always a plus. There's our.
All righty.
Thank you, guys, very much. Appreciate it. And I've been there, and I can personally attest to how good it is there. If you haven't been there yet, please go participate in one of the Happy Goat assemblies. All right, so next is another new business recognition, the Dragon Stand Coffee and More. Ron Spain. Come on up, tell us what you've got going on.
Well, first of all, hello, everybody. My name is Ron Spain. We're basically, I have a family-owned business. I have five sons and two little girls. I've been in radio ever since I left Bland when I grew up there. I basically ran away at 15 due to the worst circumstances at home, traveling the country, the nation, even, you know, international. And honestly, we're happy to be here. We just recently purchased the home in the Shake Rag, and, you know, the neighborhood is just amazing, you know, and even when you branch out further than that, it really is a truly special place you guys have here. You know, I've, with the business I was in, I was in 35 locations in less than two years, so I've seen it, and there's some really crazy places out there. But, you know, ever since we've been here, everybody's been more than welcoming, and yes, Tazewell used to kick our butt in football. We all know that. We've all been there. But, you know, we just, we just want the community to know where we're partners with them, too. We actually dedicated 5% of our earnings to, you know, putting out for disabled people, putting out for victims of domestic violence, things of that nature. So we're not just wanting to take, we wanted to set roots because quite personally, as a family, we've never had it, you know, due to my job, due to what I was doing, whatever it may be. But we're just happy to be here and do what we want, and most of our menu is new things, probably to the area itself. You know, white coffee is new to here from the feedback that I've got. You know, a lot of the food is like high in petted horse, but we're going to look for a cheaper price for you guys, because we literally can't do like the cost analysis that's problematic for everybody. So, you know, we're going to have cornbread, pulled pork muffins, you know, maybe some lasagna, stuff you can grab real quick. It's going to be a dry food. So, you know, it's just pick up your things. We're going to be cheaper than Starbucks. We're not looking to take advantage of anybody. We just want to put our product in your mouth. So like literally compliment stuff.
Your business is going to be where the old Big Berito's?
Correct. One of Ford Corlack.
Okay.
Yeah.
When are you all planning on opening?
Hopefully the first, but I'm actually working a full-time job on the radio right now, so I have one day a week, so I'm in there busting my butt, and I got my helpers with me, too. So, you know, it works out, but, you know, people shipping and stuff this time of year, Christmas coming around, you know, I don't want to say it's a hard, we're opening the first, but at very least, maybe it's off-opening on the first, so people can kind of see what we're doing and where we're going.
Thank you for taking a chance here in the town of Tazewell. We always love recognizing new businesses.
Thank you.
Can you get that to your main table? He showed up, so he gets the gift, too.
Oh, there you go. Just showing up, man.
Okay, next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from council meeting on November 9th, 2022. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approval, say so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say so by saying nay. So the minutes from last month are approved. Next, I need a motion on the approval of the financial statements and financial report from November 2022. You get a motion?
So move.
You get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approval, say so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say so by saying nay. All right, financial statements are approved. Next on the agenda is the committee and conference updates. Planning Commission Committee, Councilmember Davis.
The council, the Planning Commission met last Monday. We had an application to amend the zoning on a piece of property from R1 to R2. The Planning Commission did not see a problem with it and referred it up to council to set a public hearing, and that'll be coming a little later.
All right. Excellent. Thank you. So next is our unfinished business section. We didn't see any miscellaneous, so we'll jump into the special presentation request, and Mr. Corbin Stone with Robinson Farmer Cox Associates is going to discuss the audit.
Well, thanks for having me. You should have. I think everybody has a copy of the report and also my presentation, which is considerably smaller, and I'll kind of just walk you through that. The first thing I'll tell you is that you receive what we call an unqualified, unmodified opinion, which means we believe financial statements aren't materially direct. And I think your staff, you know, Leanne and really everybody else, did a great job this year. I've really, we've noticed some improvements over the years, and we're really pleased with the shape of the books this year. If you look at the first page of the handout, I've got some numbers up top, and I keep using this small print. I keep, I'm getting older, and you would think that with, we'd creep in at some point, that'd make this a little bit larger. But on the very top line, you can see your general fund balance, and at the end of 2022, it's just below $1.3 million. Now, a little caveat with that, you receive some ARPA funds, and you actually don't get to recognize those as revenues, so they don't ultimately drop down to fund balance until you have allowable expenses. So you have 1.58 million sitting in a liability account called earned revenue or deferred revenue. So you just kind of have to add that number to this $1.3 million. But we will show that as you have allowable costs under the ARPA program, so that will come in as revenue in future, in the current fiscal year, possibly even the next fiscal year. Even if you took out what you did recognize as ARPA funds during 22, you would have had an increase in your fund balance. You recognized about $560,000 in ARPA funds. So even if we took that out of this fund balance, you still would have had an increase.
Hey, Corbin. What is that fund out if you were to take that?
I, oh, asking me to do math without my 10K, but, you know, between $700,000, $800,000.
Anybody have any questions on that?
The next line down, enterprise funds, you see a slight increase. Enterprise funds watered sewer. So you see a slight increase in the net position of those funds in 2022, and you can see it's kind of been increasing really over the last few years. Total outstanding debt, next few lines down, general fund, $61,000. We've broken off the IDA this year, $247,000 there. It was included with the general fund last year. And enterprise funds, watered sewer, $3.5 million. So total outstanding debt, and that's loans essentially, stood at $3.8 million at the end of the year. That gives you a debt per capita, the way I measure it, at $873. Now, the state includes these other liabilities that you see here, pension liabilities and post-employment benefit or OPEB liabilities. If you did that and included all those numbers, your debt per capita, your long-term liabilities per capita would be about $1,400. Compared to a state average of $2,700 per town. So towns with populations of under 3,500. So that debt per capita is actually lower than what we see, about half of the state average. And then down at the bottom, I'm just grabbing out some of this information, but that green line that you see shooting up, that's your cash in the bank. Remember I told you, you don't recognize those ARPA funds until you have allowable expenditure, but we do, including the cash in the bank. So you've got a pretty big jump in the cash balances, up over $4 million, and interest rates are moving up. So in fact, we'll probably get a rate increase tomorrow from the Federal Reserve. So it gives you an opportunity to earn a little money on your money, finally, after seven years. So that can, that should help in 23 and 24, kind of fight inflation as it is. The next page, I'm just showing your original tax assessments going back to 2007, 2008. I didn't have the personal property data, and we just started doing your audit in 2018, but the annualized growth rate in real estate assessments, just under a percent a year in this five-year period, personal property is up about 4% per year. That's on an annualized basis. And I do think we're going to see that kind of slow down a little bit, that growth, because car purchases are really largely driven by interest rates. As interest rates go up, then that means the asset prices come down, is what I like to say. So we should see the prices of used vehicles and new vehicles hopefully kind of moderate over the next year or two. So I don't expect to see those increases continue with that rate. The next page, the Virginia retirement system has us go in each year and kind of test some of your employees to make sure the correct salary has been posted in the system for them. So when your town manager leaves, you know, he gets retirement based on his final salary. So they want us to go ahead and check to make sure that's been reported correctly, not too low, but of course, not too high. So we didn't have any problems. We've tested new hires, we've tested terminated employees, and we just test random folks, primarily your key administrative divisions, to make sure their salaries are then reported correctly. And this really came about several years ago, someone, not here, but somewhere retired under VRS, that they'd only been in a VRS-covered position for about five years, is my understanding. But the county just forgot to take them out of the systems. They literally made a retirement contribution for this person for about a 25-year period, and that person realized it, retired on the state system. It's my understanding, one of the reasons we're testing this now, to make sure we get everybody in there and get the folks that lead out. So that's why we tested this. We didn't see any problems. We were able to rotate tests kind of this year for the town, so we didn't test all the various components, and we just rotated three every year. The next couple pages, starting on page, really page five through 13, that's our letter to the charge of government. I've already told you, you receive an unqualified opinion, and we didn't have any problems with staff performing the audit. If we had problems, they would be reported to you in this letter. We do talk about some of the key estimates of the financial statements, pension liabilities, your post-employment benefit liabilities, they are estimates, because we don't know once someone leaves here, how long they're going to be receiving retirement from the town. So that's an estimate based on, you know, actual rental tables and discount rates and projected earnings. But you basically get a bulletproof letter there. And finally, at least in the handout, the last several pages, give you an update on recent accounting standards that you'll be implementing over the next few years. I'm not going to go over all of those. And I say, I think I say this everywhere, if you're having trouble sleeping tonight, they do that. And we did have a couple of management comments. It was just a separate handout that went along with the presentation. Nothing major, just some, really some housekeeping items, school, the house staff to take care of for next year. But like I said, the audit went very well, and we're very pleased the folks saw, and we're happy to see that fund balance.
I know VRA is, Corbin, you may not be paid on. But I know VRA.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Council, any one more questions?
Thanks for having me. If you do have any questions, my contact information is from the front. I tell everyone, don't worry about getting a bill the next day. I'm here to help you guys any way I can, and I'm happy to do.
Be careful of the paper.
Thank you, Corbin.
Yes, sir.
Next on the agenda is a resolution of honor for Mr. Robert Bobby Altizer. So I'm going to read the resolution, and I understand family members are here, so we'll present this to them. The resolution of honor, whereas Robert Brooks Bobby Altizer Jr. served as the Town and Tazewell Police Department's prosecuting attorney for over 30 years, and whereas Bobby started his legal career at the local law firm, Gillespie Gillespie &amp; Hart in Tazewell, Virginia, where he has credited his mentors Harris Hart II, Carl Gillespie Sr., and Carl Gillespie Jr. for teaching him skills that made him a great attorney and an exceptional prosecutor for the town, and whereas Bobby loved what he did, he saliously represented his clients in law, in a law career that spanned over 40 years, the entirety of which was spent at Gillespie Hart, Altizer, and Whiteville PC in Tazewell, Virginia, where at the time of his death, he was the senior partner, and whereas Bobby gave back as well, formerly serving as president of the Virginia State Bar, director of the Tazewell Area Chamber of Commerce, president of the Tazewell County Humane Services Board, president of the Virginia Tech Foundation, director and president of Tazewell Little League Baseball, and also as an elder of the Tazewell Presbyterian Church, and whereas Bobby was a high-energy, passionate individual who simply loved life, lived it to the fullest, and could always be counted on for a good time, now therefore be a resolved that I, Michael Left Hoops, mayor of the Town of Tazewell with its citizens concur, do hereby commend Bobby for his service to the Town of Tazewell and for his excellent community service, and do hereby present this resolution of honor and remembrance and appreciation to Bobby's family with our condolences. Adopted this 13th day of December, 2022. Sometimes it's kind of hard following things like that, you know, when someone's meant so much to the community. You know, you'd always see him walking around, he was a great guy, and, you know, you just, you love honoring someone, but it's hard when it's under these circumstances. So moving on, our next is a special presentation to Vice Mayor Mullins and Councilmember Brown by myself. So we will start here. We have to cover these up. So this, presented to Dr. Terry Mullins in recognition of his many years of outstanding service and dedication to the Town of Tazewell, Virginia, and his commitment to our citizens and the prosperity of our town. Serving the Town of Tazewell, Virginia as a member of town council July 2010 through May 2015, served as vice mayor June 2015 to December 2022. So we would, one, like to present you with this plaque.
I appreciate the opportunity that the people of this town have given me to serve on their council. It's been interesting, and I have enjoyed it. Thank you.
So next is presented to Dr. Chris Brown in recognition of his many years of outstanding service and dedication to the Town of Tazewell, Virginia, and his commitment to our citizens and the prosperity of our town, serving the Town of Tazewell, Virginia as a member of town council, March 2012 through December 2022. And we got you a Rolex, too.
Casillas.
Calculator watch.
I, too, would say that I'm honored to serve. I thoroughly appreciate everyone on this bench and everyone that was on this bench in times past. The town, the, I said, we have the best manager. I really believe that. And if people could see, if people could see what we've done on a shoestring budget, it literally reminds me of like when I was a kid, and you wonder how my parents would make it and how they would make things happen when it seemed like there was no money, and how you find money to do things and to show a report like that based on what we're doing. You, your staff, our public works, our water waste management, everybody in this town is just, I think, amazing, and I appreciate the opportunity to serve Houston.
Okay, moving on. Next is swearing in Mayor Hoops and Councilmember Davis and new council members Hankett and Klein by Mr. Pam Allison.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution and the Commonwealth of Virginia, and that you will faithfully and partially discharge all the duties incumbent upon you as a county member of the Town of Tazewell, Virginia for a term commencing January 1st, 2023, and expiring December 31st, 2024, according to the best of your ability, so help you God.
That's a pretty good pin.
Do you and each of you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution and the Commonwealth of Virginia, and that you will faithfully and partially discharge all the duties incumbent upon you as a county member of the Town of Tazewell, Virginia for a term commencing January 1st, 2023, and ending on December 31st, 2026, according to the best of your ability, so help you God. Oh, thank you.
Mayor, like today, one thing I could, you know, Pam Allison has been with the county for, I don't know if you've ever heard her say how long, a long time, but she recently just announced that she will be not running, but I just want to say to the record, it's been wonderful working with the team. I know you've done these swearing-ins for a long time, well, ever since you've been on Buddy before we do, I can go way back, but congratulations.
Okay, so moving right along, next is a special appreciation presentation by Adrenalin Offroad. Whoever gets in with a brand-new Jeep.
My name is Rick Rose. I'm president of Adrenalin Offroad, Yarn and Rallyer, Vice President. And we do rides through mountain areas, different terrains, try to get different charities out, and you know, the... And you know, the chief here saying, you know, we go to them, say, hey, can we get a police officer to direct traffic through there? And the chief here told us one time, he said, if I can't get nobody to do it, I'll come out and do it myself. We just want to present him with this plaque, get him comfortable and present him with it. But probably tell if he does for us, you know, he does a great deal for us, huh?
It'd be hard for us to do what we do without him.
Chief, do you know?
No.
What else we got is, you know, the mayor here, come on, Phil Mike, it's your turn.
Mike, yeah.
Ah, gee, Mike here, he's a hundred percent supportive, anything we do, he goes, what do you need? He says, anytime we need this, I'll work it out. So we're presenting him with this plaque, helping out on all he, all he did with us and all he does throughout the year.
And he is a member of the public.
He even comes ride with us, you know, when we showed us where we're going, you know, I'm, you know, this is good, you know? Tell you a little story we had, we did a ride a while back, back when, I think, March, and we went through, rolling fork and coming out through, but it's called Jim's, been on a trip, you remember what this one time for? And we had some people that come down from Richmond, they stayed in Christiansburg and come down, they talking brag about it. And Mike went around to everybody there, my name is Michael Hoops, I'm the mayor. And they said, you get the mayor to come ride with you? And I'm like, well, yeah, he comes all the time, you know, it was a big deal to them. You know, Mike goes, comes to meetings and goes with us quite often, it was surprising to them, you know? And then we get that kind of support. And I think, I think it's great, I think Mike's a little handball, he does a little shit.
Mr. Dave, you stand please. We'd like to present you with this appreciation of everything the family has done for us. And let us use our facilities and, uh...
Thank you, sir. Give me a picture.
Yeah, we appreciate all the town does, you know, all, Leanne's a member of the club, she comes out and helps us with a lot of things. A lot of different people can't come in and join us, you know? We just want to appreciate everybody that comes and does, you know? Help us out, you know, he brought out, he helps us out with some different things. And we appreciate everything you guys do for us.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you all, okay.
Good to see you.
I got a bed in my Jeep, you can sit in the back. We'll put you in the back. But next on the agenda is a fire department purchase request, Chief Thomas and TJ Johnson?
I just want to thank you, you know, for the ladder truck. It's a great addition to update this. We've had a little bit of trouble with it, but it was off warranty, so we're getting it lined up. Thank you very much. TJ's got something.
We've got, yeah, we want to thank y'all for the little ladder truck that y'all got us. Yeah, it's pretty good, brother.
Oh, come on, DJ. Compared to the other ones?
Yeah, compared to it, you know, it's modern, it's a little truck, pretty good. We've got a non-motor version, which y'all know. No pump, no, no pump, no tank, hard snow on the plate, well, France ain't in business no more. Uh, does some research, found a truck in Stockton, New York. It's a 2001, just trust, newer than this, than a non-motor truck, 1500 gallon pump, 1500 gallon tank on the truck. It's got 21,000 miles on it. It's got a 7K, 7, and I have kilowatt generator on it. We'd just like to get that truck replaced, feel fit, because I've got another truck, our mainline truck, and we got, you know, 1,000 gallons on each truck, we got two of them down there, it's 2,000 gallons sitting in the building. I've got another one sitting down there, they did some major work done on it. It's gonna be down for quite some time, I feel, you know, get another truck to step in line and take care of this place, till we get this one fixed and get them all back and pop them out of shape. So I found a truck, it's in Stockton, like I said, it's a 2001, they're in Ashland, it's made by four guys. And Mayor's Devil Pennsylvania, which is Siders County, so our Pennsylvania. Stockton's bought a truck, brand new, it's been recently pump tested, they sent me maintenance records up, they was getting maintenance, they got a new state inspection of New York in it, or New York State Inspection sticker back in October. They sent it to the dealer, and then every three to five years, they send it to have the pump crew back, little back in the pump, they've had that done to it. And they've recently purchased a new truck to take us in this place. Unfortunately, you know, some places have, have money to go out and get a new truck, some places, you know, just get what they can, what they got. So I reached out, told, man sent me everything about the truck, they own 52, five fours. They sent me pictures of it, I've got a picture of it, actually, two of them, them using the truck, and the truck just, uh, used it, they went out and pulled it last Tuesday, they sent me pictures of it, and I just got a picture of the regular truck sitting there, if y'all want to look at them.
So TJ, this move, replace the truck.
Six eight four.
Six eight, one, it went way past Chief Hodges, it's way, way on fast, it's been broken down, ain't it?
It's been broken down some, probably been 15 years.
I would recommend, Ken, so you've got $133,000 of unallocated, I'm not gonna say unaccompanied, but unallocated funds left if you could purchase, well, this is a 52 five, but I'd recommend you proceed forward and purchase that vehicle, keep them on the road.
So will you actually get the hands-on inspected and make sure it's?
This is Stockton, New York, I'll allow them to look at the truck up there. It's ready to get, right? It's ready to get, it says, all we had to do is come back with water and throw a tag on, should run back to the junction, get the starter, put the pumper.
Any discussion?
This is, I mean, Chief Hodges had come back several years ago and was talking about replacing this truck. And that's, I mean, this has been years into making, so...
So you're for it?
Yes, I am.
So it'll fit in the garage, right?
Yes.
That's the last thing it would need. Okay, so I've got a second, all in favor of approval for purchasing the fire trucks, stay so by saying aye? Aye. All opposed, stay so by saying nay? All right, two fire trucks in a year, I like that.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Absolutely. So, next on the agenda is a resounding request by Ms. April Morefield.
Hello, it's good to see each of you again so soon. So last time I was here, I went over a kind of superficial overview of the care center and how Harper's Home evolved. What I'd like to do tonight is to go into a little bit deeper about Harper's Home and the services that it will provide and exactly to the children that Harper's Home will target. And of course, I want to talk about some of the successes of the care center that I didn't highlight last time, and I'd like to bring that out and talk a bit more about that, that I think will, the history of the success of the care center will show success for Harper's Home as well. So back in 2018, there was an MOU sign between three counties, Russell, Tassau, and Buchanan, and over 40 entities came together as part of, in part of the region to create a child advocacy center. And again, this was before we opened. These were community professionals, this was law enforcement, child protective services, prosecuting attorneys, mental health professionals, and other advocacy centers across these three counties who knew and recognized that the system is very broken and fragmented for children. So after the care center opened in 2019, we recognized a need for medical, that children in Southwest Virginia were not receiving the appropriate medical attention following assault and victimization. So we opened the area's very first forensic pediatric nursing department. We hire a nurse to come down from Roanoke two days a week to serve these children. She is the only person in the area that is certified in pediatric and adult sexual assault examinations. She spends roughly two hours with each child. And part of the healing process for a child is knowing that they're gonna be okay after the victimization. So not only does this medical exam capture that medical evidence that is so critical for that prosecuting attorney to be able to put that perpetrator behind bars, but it's also critical to the child's emotional wellbeing, knowing that after that victimization, that they're gonna recover and that they're gonna be okay, because a nurse and a doctor told them so. So since we opened that department, we've seen over 200 children. Each week, currently, we're seeing five to eight children. The nurses having to spend the night locally to serve children, more than one day, but for two days. She's documenting severe neglect, she documents dental neglect, she sees children who has lice. So not only is she seeing victimizations such as sexual assault and physical abuse, such as bruises, broken collarbones, broken arms in infants, but she's also documenting the neglect that children have to live through. Another partnership that the care center developed back in 2020, when we opened this medical department, was with Virginia Commonwealth University Children's Hospital. And that's the first partnership that this area has ever had with VCU. I met a doctor named Dr. Robin Foster, who is one of three child abuse maltreatment pediatricians in the entire state of Virginia. She runs that hospital. And I told her about our role area, and I told her about how the children are suffering, and I told her that in order to have an effective child advocacy center, that we have to have the appropriate medical care for children following assault. And she agreed, and she said, I will help you. That meant the world to us at our child advocacy center. So all the findings that this same nurse from Roanoke finds and documents, she sends up to that pediatrician, who reviews them and says, yes, this is neglect, yes, this is physical abuse, yes, this is rape, yes, this is child torture. And we have had a child torture case recently in Russell County. So I was honored, last year to be appointed, I'm sorry, excuse me, this year to be appointed by the governor to serve on the Safe and Sound Task Force. I was charged with a task, I was put in charge of the entire southwest Virginia area to work with local DSSs and come up with a way to not only support DSS, but to help them solve the problem of having children sleep in DSS agencies or hotels or ERs until they can find a foster care home. And I took that role very seriously, and I still do. I served on the local DSS board. I noticed that a person here tonight for the public hearing made a comment that, where's the need? Where's the statistics? Well, I'm here to inform you that it just goes to show you how out of touch with reality that some people can be, with how badly children hurt, and it's right here in our community every single day in front of our faces. We do study those statistics, we do know those, because we are privately funded, but we're also state and federal funded. So every demographic that comes to the care center and through our medical department, we capture and we study. We look at what type of mental health disability a child has, we look at things such as whether they have, you know, dental neglect, we look at who they live with, we capture all those demographics, and we study those to determine maybe what area that we're not targeting the most. You know, we constantly look at our numbers, but truly at the end of the day, it's that child that I see and that my coworkers see who come into our doors and they're pitiful and they're broken. And when they come to the care center and they share that story of victimization, it's hard to hear. And then when they're told that they have to leave their home and go into foster care, it's even more heartbreaking, because we're not working with troubled children here, we're working with children who have been hurt and victimized. And they're removed from their home at no fault of their own. So it is our job as a community to help those children have a place to go for comfort, for support, for love. You know, when children think about things that happened during abuse, those are bad memories. We want good memories of the process that they had to go through after the victimization. We want them to remember coming to the care center and having a snack, and feeling comfortable, and feeling loved, and getting a Love Harper Comfort Bag that had lots of little goodies in it, goodies that they had never had given to them. We want their outcome for victimization to be much better than what people in the past have had to deal with. In the past, people have dealt with trauma for years and it was never dealt with, it was never addressed, until the Child Advocacy Center, Advocacy Center came about, children had to live with that trauma, they had to go to a police department, they had to go to CPS and talk about what happened to them and how they were abused, as if they were in trouble. We're not here for that now. Now, now, we're here to make a process very child-friendly, and the care center is all about that. We want to make that child comfortable. We want to let them know that abuse is not normal, and we see a lot of abuse with children in their home, and children think that's normal. We want to let them know that is not normal. And that's what Harper's Home is all about. Harper's Home is a place where when these children are removed, that they can go to, with their foster care worker, and get a needle, get an app, get a change of clothes, get clean pajamas, get a new pair of shoes, get a diaper bag, get a pillow, to be left on, until they go to that foster care home, rather than go to a DSS agency and sit and wait in a cubicle. That is what Harper's Home is about. I want children to know that abuse is not their fault, and it doesn't define who they are. I want children to know that they're loved, and they're loved by this community of Tassau, and that they've done nothing wrong. Children are our most vulnerable, besides the elderly, they're our most vulnerable population. And I stand before you today to ask you to support Harper's Home. I understand the resounding efforts, I understand that it's a big deal, and I understand there's been a lot of concerns in the town, but again, I want to tell you that this is not about serving troubled children. This is not a juvenile detention center, it's not a group home. This is a safe, comforting landing spot for children, for children to get through a rough time in life. I thank you for allowing me to speak.
Done. So, we're not looking for a vote today, right?
Yes.
We are looking for the definition.
Yes.
We gotta read it first.
I read it, it looks like motion anyway.
You have two basically amendments that have been before the Department of Public Committee. The first one will be the amendments to section 23-1, this is out of chapter 23, zoning, article one in general, section... Section 23-1 definitions. Be either named by the Council of Town and Towns, Virginia, that hereby enacts the following amendments to Town Code, Section 23-21, regarding the definitions for words and phrases and the meaning described thereto as used within this chapter. Section 23-1 definitions. Children's residential facility. Any child carrying institution, foster home, or group home that is licensed by or in contract with the Department of Social Services or is operating in coordination with the Children's Advocacy Centers of Virginia and is maintained for the purpose of receiving children separated from their parents or guardians for full-time care, maintenance, protection, and guidance, or for the purpose of assisting and supporting the development, attenuation, and sustainability of community-coordinated child care services. Children's residential facility shall not include, one, a licensed or accredited educational institution whose pupils, in the ordinary course of events, return annually to the home to their parent or guardians for not less than two months of summer vacation. Two, an establishment required with a license that's a summer camp by Section 35.1 down 18 of the Code of Virginia as amended. Three, a licensed or accredited hospital legally maintained as such. Four, any facility licensed by the Department of Social Services as a child-carrying institution as of January 1, 1987, and that received public funds. Foster home. A residence approved by an accredited child placement agency or local board of the Department of Social Services in which any child, other than a child by birth or adoption of such personal child who is a subject of a power of returning to delegate rental or legal custodial powers by his parents or legal custodians to a natural person who has been designated the child's legal guardian pursuant to Chapter 10, Section 20-166 and follows, of Title 20 of the Code of Virginia, comma, as amended, who exercises legal authority over the child on a continuous basis for at least 24 hours without compensation and resides as a member of the household. Group home. A children's residential facility that is community-based, home-like single dwelling, or its acceptable equivalent other than a private home with the operator that is and serves up to eight residences.
Well, we gotta, we gotta approve the change in the definitions part.
Correct, that's correct.
So we need a name of motion to amend the existing ordinance to add children's residential facility to Section 23-1 definitions.
Mayor, first you need to have, this is the first reading. So if you go through it under your charter, you didn't have to have a motion to waive the second reading and pass it as an emergency. And then, so you need two votes. Motion to pass, then a motion, motion to approve, and a motion to approve it as an emergency ordinance.
So but first we need to waive, right? Waive the second reading?
Yes.
Okay. Make a motion to waive the second reading.
Can I make a motion?
I get a second?
So what?
Did you make the motion?
I made the motion.
All right, so Dave, second? So any discussion? All in favor of waiving the second reading, states so by saying aye? All opposed, states so by saying nay? All right, so second reading is waived. So now I need a motion to approve the amendment to the existing ordinance to add children's residential facilities to Section 23-1 definitions.
So I'm gonna make a second.
Any discussion? All in favor of making the needed changes, states so by saying aye? All opposed, states so by saying nay? All right.
And now you need to make a motion to pass it as an emergency.
I'll make the motion.
I get a second to pass the changes as an emergency.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of making the changes as an emergency, states so by saying aye? All opposed, states so by saying nay? All right. So we move forward with that.
Step one down.
The second ordinance amendment is also the Chapter 23 zoning, Article 2, District Regulations, Division 5, Residential General, R-2, for two to five dwelling units per acre gross. Section 23-26 use. Be either named by the Council of Town and Towns, Virginia, that hereby enacts the following amendment to Town Code, Section 23-26, regarding permitted uses in a residential general R2 zone. Section 23-26 use as amended. Section 3 to eliminate rest homes and to then to add children's residential facility, foster home, and group home. All other uses identified in the section will remain unchanged.
The second reading. All right, can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of waiving the second reading, states so by saying aye? All opposed, states so by saying nay? All right, so second reading is waived. So now we need a motion to approve the amendments to the existing ordinance?
I'll make the motion.
I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of making the request to change, states so by saying aye? All opposed, states so by saying nay? We also gotta do it as an emergency office.
If you want to take it back immediately, you did.
Okay, can I get a motion to pass this as an emergency to take effect immediately?
I'll make the motion.
I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of passing this as an emergency to take place or take effect immediately, states so by saying aye? All opposed, states so by saying nay? All right, so changes will be effective immediately. Next is to review the planning commission recommendations to set public hearings for zoning requests for property at 751 Den Castle Turnpike to zone from R1 to R2. So can I get a motion to set a public hearing for the next, what day is that? January? Do we know what day in January? So to set a public hearing for January 10th prior to the normal schedule of town council meeting?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. You have to go. At 7:15. At 7:15, just for one minute, may change. Okay, for 7:15.
That works for me.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor of setting public hearing, states so by saying aye? All opposed, states so by saying nay? All right, so the public hearing will be set for January.
Yeah, they could have been a little late there.
Yeah, they could have.
My will, send out eight certified letters to join in.
How many homes?
Eight.
Eight?
Let everybody cross the street and touch the left side of the street.
Excellent, thank you. So next, this might take a little while. Item D, the reappointment of Town Manager Todd Day. I need a-
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Yep.
Hey, what's up?
Everything's fine. It's working. Just a little bit on the year contract. He's got two years now and he's going to give three more years, so it's five years.
I believe we already discussed that at one time and I've already signed the papers.
That was on the, they just raised.
That was both. We sat in an executive session and we all approved. The council approved that we would extend what time we had left to equal five years. As I signed that and it was provided to our attorney.
I'd still like to hear what council has got to say.
But they're gonna pass it anyway.
Sorry, don't pass, but he wants to hear what's on his mind.
No, that's all right. Go ahead. I refer to the year contract. I've done good work. The contracts, I'd rather see a year contract or let everybody else have two or three-year contracts to sign on. That's the way I feel.
Okay, any more discussion? All right, all in favor of reappointing Manager Day? States so by saying aye? All opposed, states so by saying nay? One dissent. All right, next on the agenda is the reappoint clerk Leanne Reagan. Need a motion to reappoint?
Good move. Second.
Any discussion?
Great job, Mayor.
Smile, Leanne. You still have a job. So all in favor of reappointing clerk Leanne Reagan? States so by saying aye? All opposed, states so by saying nay? All right, so Ms. Reagan has been reappointed. Next is the reappointment of Park Chief John Thomas. I get a motion to reappoint?
Make a motion.
You get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approval of reappointment for Park Chief John Thomas? States so by saying aye? All opposed, states so by saying nay? All right, congratulations, chiefs. We've got a job.
Thank you.
Next is the reappointment of Town Attorney Brad Pyatt. I need a motion to reappoint?
Second.
Any discussion? The, all in favor of reappointment of Attorney Brad Pyatt? States so by saying aye? All opposed, states so by saying nay? All right, Brad, you'll be with us?
Thank you.
You're along?
Absolutely.
So next, item H, discuss the vacancy and discuss and approve the IEDA reappointments. Manager Day.
Okay, you get two positions that you need to fill. What I'm gonna ask is we'll send out an email and if you can just offer recommendations with those two positions or Zach Klein, you can't be an elected official to be on the IEDA. And the other one is Derek Pritchett. He's asked to be reappointed, to be removed. You also, the only reappointment that you have right now is Chris Wareman. His term ran out, runs out December 31st. His new term will be January 1, '23, and December 31st, '26. You need to vote. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor of reappointing Chris Wareman to the IEDA? States so by saying aye? All opposed, states so by saying nay? All right, so reappointment carries through. So next, discuss and approve planning commission reappointments. Manager Day.
You get three positions on the planning commission whose terms run out December 31st, '22. Their new terms will obviously go from January 23 to December 31st, '26. Those individuals are Ms. Davis, Jerry Cromer, and Pete Davis. Do you need a motion to reappoint as considered there?
Can I get a motion to approve the reappointment of Councilmember Davis, Jerry Cromer, and Pete Davis to the planning commission?
I'll make the first motion.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving the reappointments? States so by saying aye? All opposed, states so by saying nay? Right, so reappointments carry through. Next, discuss vacancy and discuss and approve Board of Zoning Appeals reappointment.
Okay, the only one that's coming off and requested to be removed is Anthony Brooster. You need to reappoint Daniel Ingram, William Wicks, Benny Moore, and Joe Bowlen. All their terms will run out December 31st, '22. Their new term will be January 1, '23 through December 31st, '24.
So who was it? Daniel Ingram, Bill Wicks, and Benny Moore and Joe Bowlen.
I make a motion to approve the reappointment.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving the reappointments? States so by saying aye? All opposed, states so by saying nay? All right, so reappointments carry. Next, discuss the vacancy and discuss and approve historic review board reappointments. Manager Day.
All right, we've had one resignation who is Zach Cash. And again, we'll send out an email for that reappointment right now. We've got Eric Galloway and also Terry Mullins. So I think Terry Mullins, he'll be reappointed.
So those are the two that you need to reappoint. You said Eric Galloway?
Erica.
Erica.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving the reappointments on the historic review board? States so by saying aye? All opposed, states so by saying nay? All right, so reappointments carry. Next, I didn't see anything under miscellaneous. So next, is anyone signed in under Republican?
I've already, that's both. I don't know what the column wants to see.
They signed up, basically.
For the public hearing. Understood. So, no one else? Signed in, ready? Let's move to council member comments.
I'd just like to say thank you to Dr. Mullins and Dr. Brown. You two have both been very influential in me being here today and I'm sure, you know, not just me, others. And I appreciate all of you all done.
What are you all doing? Second two days of mine.
Watch your TV.
It's not lucid until later. You can't watch it live.
Mayor, bye, Ted. I'd just like to give a thanks to Public Works. I had an issue a couple weeks ago and they dispatched themselves quickly and were very efficient. Just great job. All the workers do a great job. I would also like to say I've enjoyed it with the two new members I left and couldn't wish having you up here.
Thank you, Ted. Yes, absolutely. It's been great working with you guys and also look forward to working with the new council members that are coming aboard.
I will say that too. I'd like to wish the two gentlemen that are coming aboard kind of the best of luck. And I've got a little packet here if you can get one.
I would like to, hey, I'm very thankful for the past well, half years. I grew up here in this town and the opportunity that people gave me to serve on Town Council has been very gratifying and very fulfilling. I am very thankful to the mayor and mayors and council members here and those in the past who I had the opportunity to work with. And we all, from what I could tell, had one common desire and that was to serve Castle, to make Castle a better place to live. I would likewise like to thank the employees of the town because without you, your hard work and your diligent efforts, we would not have made the progress that this town has made. And that goes to every member of the staff all the way up to our manager. Thank you. In addition, I appreciate the backing of my family because they are always my biggest supporters. And I thank, or I should say, I encourage the two new members to jump on board and I wish you the best. I wish you the best.
Well, Matt, we're good.
You got anything to add, Dave?
Well, nothing, I don't have no groundhog problems. But I like exactly the integrity from all the crowd working with us and hope the best for them and I'm happy to see the two coming on. Hank and Ryan, you're gonna have fun. Relax and take a break.
You're gonna have a hard time keeping him alive.
Yeah.
I've been trying, but.
I gave up three minutes ago.
But I want to congratulate the town crew in the back. They, I've been hearing a lot of, a lot of good deals with them, working the main street and working around town. I like to see them, you know, to keep them on was possible because they have done a good job and I've seen it from the police department to the fire department and rescue. I have no problems with these issues. You're doing a great job. I wish that to do something better for you. If you need anything, give me a call, I'll be glad to help out. But I do appreciate the sleepy dogs that were here. Are y'all happy? Still working on that issue?
We're investigating.
All right, who's your best neighbor? Okay. Well, hopefully bad, gotta keep you going. But other than that, I appreciate y'all. Is that good?
Wonderful, good job.
All right, any other comments?
Mayor, we have legislative days on January 31st. The only thing they're gonna have is a reception this year. So any council, council person that wants to go, Chris, let me know as soon as possible. Rooms are booked enough.
Yeah, I'll definitely be.
You want to go? Yeah, I might go too.
You would have a big day.
All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
I get a second? Any discussion?
I'm going on that trip.
All in favor of adjournment, stateside by saying aye? All opposed, stateside by saying nay? All right, made in adjourn.